Testing one, two, three. Testing. Mic check, mic check. Testing one, two, three. Mic check, mic check. Testing one, two, three. Mic check, mic check. Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. Mic check, mic check. Testing one, two, three. Mic check. Testing.
What have you been up to?
How about you?
Not much.
You had a good summer?
Yeah, I didn't have a good summer.
It doesn't feel like it's over yet, but the kids are back in school and so getting back to some normalcy.
I know. And I'm like, already, school's already out one day. Just... Already.
Yeah. It's crazy. But no, I mean, we've been all good. Can't complain.
Yeah, me neither. See what these guys have going on over here, let's see.
Been busy, so that's good.
I hope he's gonna make one motion. Because he's sounding like he's trying to make two. Huh?
Oh, yeah.
He was saying something about deferring number one.
Yeah, the meeting minutes. We won't have to wait to approve them next time.
Defer until next month.
Yeah, they're just... They're gonna put our motion and stuff down. One of the things in meeting minutes, so we just thought it'd be easier to defer the approval of these meeting minutes until October.
Defer until next month and approve consent agenda. That's all this will do.
Yeah, we'll approve everything else, too.
Bill, did you think we'd make one motion? Okay. So, let's see here.
I don't know. Gotta do it outside, because that guy was right. On the traveling squad. Well, we're supposed to wait. Not yet.
Good afternoon. We will call to order the September 2019 City of Columbia Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to welcome all Planning Commission members, staff, and guests. At this time, I would like to ask everyone to turn their cell phones and PDAs to the silent or vibrate mode. The Administrator will now proceed with the roll call.
All right, Mr. Tupper?
Here.
And Ms. Hartz?
Here.
Ms. Mendel?
Mr. Combe?
Here.
Mr. Stigemeyer?
Here.
Ms. James?
Here.
And Mr. Frost?
Here.
All right, we have quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to briefly review the meeting format. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allotted a presentation time of 10 minutes. This time should include, but is not limited to, an overview of the project, case history, and any pertinent meetings regarding the request. This time also includes all persons presenting information on behalf of the applicant, such as attorneys, engineers, and architects. This time limit does not include any questions asked by the Planning Commission or staff regarding requests. Members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns in intervals of two minutes. The Administrator has a timer and will make presenters aware of when their time has expired. The Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. The Consent Agenda. Planning Commission uses the Consent Agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion and vote. Examples of such items include approval of site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public would like to discuss an item on the Consent Agenda, that item is removed from the Consent Agenda and considered during the meeting. The Planning Commission then approves the remaining Consent Agenda items. The Administrator will now read the Consent Agenda.
All right, we have a rather lengthy Consent Agenda, so bear with me. Item number one is the approval of the August 5th minutes. Item number two is a recommendation to annex assigned interim land use and assigned interim zoning for 121 and 141 Sparkleberry Crossing Road. Item number three is a request to annex assigned land use classification and assigned zoning to 113, 117, and 121 McLeod Road. Item number four is a recommendation to annex assigned interim land use and interim zoning to 14624, 4628, and 4830 Divine Street. Item number five is a recommendation to annex assigned land use classification and assigned zoning to 1.7 acres on County Line Trail, as well as a number of site plans. The first is item number six, a request of site plan approval to construct a 97-lot single-family residential subdivision at approximately 76.96 acres at 2031 County Line Road. Item number seven, which is a site plan to construct 105-lot single-family residential subdivision called the Paddocks at Wood Creek, which is 26.7 acres at 10750 Two-Notch Road. Item number nine, which is a request to approve a construction of 109-lot single-family residential subdivision called the Stables at Wood Creek Farms, which is 19.7 acres at 10750 Two-Notch Road. And item number nine, which is a site plan approval to reconstruct an apartment building that was demolished due to a fire at Harbison Gardens Apartment at 401 Columbiana Drive.
You had a mouthful.
That's a lot.
Thank you. Do any Commission members or guests today wish to have items on the Consent Agenda removed and placed on the regular agenda? Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to defer item number one, approve the August 5th, 2019 minutes to next month, so a correction can be made.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Consent Agenda approved with the exception of number one. Now we need to... To defer it, rather. Now we need to continue and get a motion to approve the remaining items on the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, items number two through items number nine, as proposed.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Remaining items are approved. We will now proceed with the regular agenda. I would like to remind everyone who speaks today, when they come forward, to please state their name clearly before speaking.
All right, that's gonna bring us to item number 10, which is a site plan review, which is at 301 Assembly Street. TMS number is 11204-02-02, 11204-02-06, 11204-02-07, and then 11204-02-42. And this is... This project is comprised of 17 acres on four parcels that are bounded by Dreyfus and Assembly Street on the east. On the north, Ferguson on the east, south by Hammrick Street, and by multifamily residential properties, and west by vacant land that is on D1. The properties are zoned M1 FP and 11204-02-42, which fronts on Ferguson, is currently being considered for annexation. And this is the... Will entail the demolition of the Capital City Stadium and the construction of a multifamily residential mixed-use development. The applicant is proposing to construct seven buildings that will range in height from two to four stories. There will be 20,000 square feet of retail and 310 apartments with swimming pool, basketball courts, and outdoor dining as amenities. There'll be 676 parking spaces, which is required, and the applicant has provided 698. There's also infrastructure that will be installed. The applicant is providing sidewalks, landscaping, street lining along South Assembly and Ferguson Streets and throughout the site. In addition, there's a pedestrian bridge that will be installed for pedestrians to cross the relocation of the drainage that comes through there. Also, there's a traffic impact study that was linked to the case that they've also provided, which the traffic engineer has reviewed and approved. And the applicant, I believe, is present at this time and can explain their case in detail.
Any questions first for staff? With the applicant... The applicant's here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Good evening. John Champeau, Cox &amp; Dinkins, representing the client for the ballpark. I guess staff actually did a very good job of describing what it is. And basically, what we want to do is answer questions that you have of us.
I have a quick question. So, there are a number of, it looks like generally the plan complies with all of the applicable codes, et cetera, but staff had a number of comments. Is the applicant good with all the comments that staff's made?
Did you say that 690, you're going to have 698 parking spaces?
I believe it's 689 if I'm not mistaken.
689 and 676 are required?
Required.
Is that correct?
It seemed at some point the project had 322 units that required that number of parking. It's been since reduced to 310, is that right?
Yes, through a series of negotiations with the staff, City of Columbia, we have reduced some of the density and reduced approximately 42 of the spaces that were originally proposed.
Drainage, you have, you've got the drainage situation planned?
Yes, sir. We got a regional stormwater channel running through the center of the site that, prior to our involvement in the site, was relocated and is in midst of permitting now at the front of the site.
Have you had meetings with the neighborhoods around you?
The owner has, yes.
Okay.
The client, excuse me.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Can you talk to me a little bit more about the drainage situation? That's a lot of hardscaping. That's a lot of asphalt.
Yes. The, I can let one of our consultants talk more about the actual channel itself that's relocated at the front of the site. But in planning the site, the effort was made to keep the amount of impervious surface commensurate with what was there already, so that we don't add to the burden on Rocky Branch. And, you know, if we have to detain water, obviously, that's what we'll do, and we will follow all applicable stormwater regulations.
So, your goal was not to make it any worse, but not to improve it? Is that what you just said?
Well, I don't know if I, I don't know if I exactly said that. We will improve it in that we will have to address water quality as part of the stormwater regulations. So, we have, we have to work through that with staff. But we definitely will improve the water quality as it is now.
I just, my understanding is that's kind of a flood-prone area, is that correct?
It is. And as part of some of the offsite improvements that the client is involved in is alleviation of a flooding problem at Rocky Branch, and that is part and parcel of the relocated stormwater channel. So, all of that, and then a new lomerum will eventually be approved.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to think what else to ask about it, because that is an area that's well-known to flood, and it doesn't sound like, I guess I'm trying to clarify what it seems like to make it better would be, would be nice, because it's problematic now. I mean, if I was going to live there, I mean, I would.
There are downstream, stormwater improvements that the client is committed to, being involved in, that will eliminate and are required in order to alleviate the flooding problem that they're currently working on.
Downstream commitment, what would those, what kind of commitments are those?
Right.
I'm Gerald Lennon, Pace Engineering. I've been involved on this project for several years, even when Kroger was the client. And we propose downstream to eliminate about four feet of flooding immediately downstream by putting in another culvert, and then further downstream, replacing Olympia Avenue culvert, and doing other channel improvements that's been approved by the city, by FEMA, the county in general. It's all in the county, it's not within the city limits. But that would more than compensate for what is going to be coming from this site.
Okay. That's hard to hear.
All those agencies have approved this?
It's, well, it went through the county all until it stalled because we didn't have the Corv engineers permit. That was the only issue. We still have to go for an exception because we're increasing flooding on the Vulcan Mine, but they're going to be willing to accept that. We have to go to the county administrator for that. So, no, we never, I had got that finished.
So, you don't have any agreements right now for the work that you're going to do?
No.
Okay.
But the city is, has said from the start that this offsite project has to be done in order to develop the ballpark site.
Right.
It's linked with it.
So, I mean, is that something that if we, if we approve this, that it will be in the documents as something that's required to be done?
I think it was in the agreement.
Okay, just clarifying that that was all, all of this, including the stuff that is in the county and not in the city? Are we able to do that?
She's saying it's in the contract of sale.
Okay.
Which is separate from, of course, site plan review, but a separate document, this contract of sale.
Okay. I just, I mean, you know, I grew up in the city, that's an area that's bad, and it doesn't, I'm just concerned about that, because I don't, it's a lot of parking, and a lot of, a lot more parking, so. I'll keep thinking if I have any other questions, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come up and talk about this?
My name is Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm Robert Guille, I live at 314 Pall Mall Street in the Granby Mill Village neighborhood, and I'm appearing on behalf of my neighborhood association, as well as the Mill District Alliance, consisting of my neighborhood, Olympia, and Welly Street neighborhoods. We've been actively engaged in this project since at least 2012, and share concerns about the impact on Rocky Branch. We asked the Planning Commission today to recognize that this site plan is not consistent with the Capital City Mill District Area and Corridor Plan adopted by City Council in 2017, due to the absence of planned connectivity between this project and the Mill Village neighborhoods in which I live, including completion of the Rocky Branch Greenway. City staff recognized this plan in the submission of the case summary to your August 5 agenda, where they said, "The subject property is located within the study area of the Capital City Mill District Area and Corridor Plan adopted in 2017, which was a joint planning effort and adopted by both the City of Columbia and Richland County," close quote. In particular, I draw the Planning Commission's attention to pages 79 through 82 on the subject of Greenways, Open Space, and Recreation, and to pages 91 and 92, Implementation. Under those first sections, there's extensive references to this project, to Rocky Branch, to construction of a Greenway, and to the need for connectivity between this project on Assembly Street and the Mill District communities. In the implementation portion, pages 91 and 92, there are short-term implementation provisions for one to two, three years, which already has expired, to implement a Rocky Branch Greenway improvements, to improve Olympia Park, and to construct the Greenway connecting the adjacent project with the neighborhoods. Contrary to the site plan, contrary to this planning requirement, the site plan refers only to, quote, "possible offsite pedestrian paths to Rocky Branch Greenway," doesn't exist, and it eliminates connections on the western portion of the project that were originally proposed to Bluff Road that would have allowed bike, pedestrian, and vehicular traffic from the neighborhood to the project. Finally, it spends, it commits $2 million in bike, pedestrian connectivity improvements on the opposite side of the project along Assembly Street, on the east side, on the far distant side of the project from the Mill District.
I've got to thank you, the time's up. Would anyone else like to come forward and talk about item number 10? Any further questions from the Commission?
I had a question for staff. The, it looks like on the site plan that was submitted, there's some form of access on Hammerick Street, but the traffic study didn't, didn't look like it had any connections there. There's some type of connection on site at the Hammerick Street, rear of the property? It looks like on the bottom there, there's some form of access, but the traffic study didn't have it. Is there, is that a, is that a road access or vehicular?
Hold on, this was addressed to staff?
Staff?
Yes.
Yes, there's an access that was, that was added to this revised, this revised plan, which was after the traffic impact study.
That's for cars as well as, or is it just pedestrian or?
It's for vehi, it's vehicular, so it's for cars.
I do have another question. Can staff address the concern of whether or not this plan is congruent with what was approved by City Council in 2017, and the idea that, you know, this was the Rocky Branch Greenway, and the walking accessibility? I mean, is this congruent with that? In y'alls?
The staff comments from the planning department are the, are the comments that are in your case summary, which don't state anything about noncompliance to that plan. But the planning administrator is here can speak to it.
Specifically, speaking of the Mill District plan?
Uh huh.
So, the Mill District plan did contemplate slightly different land uses on this property, but those were addressed in a different agenda item previously. And basically, there were some different, the property was divided up in some different categories with some more intensive uses towards Assembly Street and less intensive uses going towards Bluff Road. Based on their particular site plan, that line kind of shifted, and so that's where the motion previously that came to Planning Commission to adjust the land use plan. But essentially, in terms of connectivity, they are, on their particular property, their plans for sidewalks on Ferguson and Assembly and all of those things do meet the intent of that plan. The plan's not, how do I put it? It's recommendations, it's not like zoning that says you have to do that, but they are making an attempt to meet those types of criteria and connections, so.
So, the plan, as we're looking at it now, meets all the requirements and criteria?
Based on the land use and the zoning, and then the annexation of the one little parcel and all of that, putting all that together, it does meet all those goals generally.
Okay.
I had another question for staff. On the, the zoning administrator had contingent on re, it had contingent on rezoning approval? Was that based off last month, or is there additional zoning?
Yes, there's, contingent upon, it is contingent upon rezoning approval, and I believe that's still under enrollment. So, if you approve it, then it'll, if the rezoning doesn't go through, then it would not be approved. It's contingent upon that. And that's generally, that's the standard.
But I think the question is, there's not additional rezoning that has to occur, it's the motion that came before us last month that was recommended to council. Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
The appropriate rezoning's already been, that was from last month?
That's already in process.
What happens if the efforts that they have made to ameliorate the flooding are not successful, and things get worse, which, as we know, that's already a pretty bad area? Any consequences? Follow-up? I mean, the assumption that is currently in place is that if they do what they say they're going to do, that it will all be fine. What if it isn't? Then what? Are there any, is there any follow-up or consequences to that?
It could, I believe they could potentially be in violation of the contract, which would be enforceable that way.
Okay. So, they have things in place right now that they believe will address it, and if it doesn't work... Krista, are you coming to answer this?
So, there are provisions in the contract, there are regulatory provisions that are, have to be met, both from stormwater and FEMA. There are additional provisions within the contract that are above and beyond that, which they need to comply with, which are fairly cut and dry, that, given the science and the engineering, we all assume will alleviate the flooding. If they abide by those, they, they will be fined by the contract and by the regulations. If, for some reason, the engineering and the science was incorrect, or you never know, I mean, nature could throw us a curveball as well, there aren't any additional provisions for that. If they meet the requirements of the regulatory scheme, as well as the additional requirements to open up the channel all the way down to the Congaree, we've had these folks looking at it many times, we trust that that will help alleviate the flooding. But should there not be an alleviation of that flooding, we, there will be no additional measures that can be employed. So, I don't want you to think that if it does get worse, that we can go back and fine them or something of that nature. They have to be all of the regulatory in those above and beyond, which are in place, which is why the contract of sale requires those above and beyond measures.
Okay. I just think about something like Martin Luther King Park, which, over the time that I've lived in Columbia, South Carolina, I know there've been multiple studies about how to alleviate the flooding there, and then it gets redone many, many times because it doesn't work.
Right.
And there's been a lot of study and a lot of belief that whatever the last thing was, was going to work, and then it doesn't.
Right. And this last one, actually, in King Park, has significantly helped with the conditions and five points. And what's important about this project is really where you want to start, is at the beginning, and then work your way back, because you want to start relieving the choke points from the river up. And so, the projects that will be implemented with this project will start to attack those.
Kind of a follow-up question to the train of questions. Should this sale not be consummated and the city continues to own it, is the city going to make those improvements, or is really contingent upon a sale happening, correct?
It is.
So, we're really being asked to approve a project that's not totally approved itself at this point?
You are looking at it from a site plan review perspective?
Only.
Only, with regard to what regulations you have. Oftentimes, projects come to you for site plan review that have other approvals that are pending.
Which staff has said they meet the requirements?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else want to come forward before we put this to a motion?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Tom Colsad. I live at 408 Woodrow Street. I'm new to the whole process of reviewing plans, but I was interested in seeing what you all would have to say about plans that do impact on some of our local watersheds. It looks like the objective here is to transfer the flooding to some other entity besides the future owner of the property, and so I guess you could say it's the stream, Rocky Branch is more of a nuisance than an asset to the owners of this property, and... And, uh, I'd be curious about how the commission deals with watershed management in general and, uh, where some consideration for the resource value those come in. And, uh, as I said, I'm totally new at this and not sure how I'm fitting into protocols and procedures, but I thought I'd bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come forward? I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the site plan at 301 Assembly Street.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Are we approving that site plan with all staff comments?
With all staff conditions.
All conditions?
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 You want to pose?
Aye.
Motion's approved.
That's going to take us to item number 11, which is a request to be relieved from a condition of a previously granted site plan for the construction of a 43,000 square foot building at Columbia International University Business School. In a nutshell, the planning commission approved the, um, site plan for the building on September the 8th, um, 2018. And part of the planning commission's conditions was that sidewalks to access the building from the main campus area shall be provided, since limited parking will be provided. And number two, sidewalks shall be provided to Monticello Road to connect the, to the existing sidewalks. Um, on September the 9th, 20, um, 2018, um, the building permit was issued and, um, the conditions of the planning commission went forward to that permit. The applicant, of course, agreed to, um, those conditions at that time. And now this is a request, the applicant is requesting to be relieved of the conditions of providing the sidewalks. The applicant is present and can explain their case.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
My only question for staff is I've, I've reviewed this case in pretty good detail and I was having a very difficult time on the site plan depicting exactly what sidewalk is asking to be omitted. So maybe if when we bring that site plan up, Jonathan or somebody can point out specifically what's being asked for to be removed from those site plans, that heritage, slow goes on.
And why were the sidewalks being omitted? What was the reason?
Safety and security, there's a variety of reasons that they're asking for it to be omitted.
So the, um, plan they have in front of you is the plan that the applicant has proposed to be what they'd like to continue with. The, I don't have the, uh, drawing that was submitted with the building plan, but essentially, if you look to the left of your, uh, drawing that's on the screen, you'll see there is a crosswalk, um, crossing over the boulevard, that, uh, the sidewalk is coming up on the south side of the street, crosses over and then is on the north side of the street to allow access to the new business school. The construction drawings actually showed, um, the sidewalk going all the way out to, um, Monticello, uh, Monticello, um, continuing down the, uh, boulevard. And then the crossing was somewhat similar, is a little bit, a little different. They've shifted it, I think, because of the left turn lane that they're now proposing to put in. So the difference there is that there had been a sidewalk connecting to Monticello, which there, where there is actually public sidewalks. It's about a four to five minute walk to the nearest bus stop, um, to the Comet. And then the other variations that they're requesting that are not on the construction drawings is the, uh, U-turn component right there by the guardhouse, where actually they're cutting the boulevard and then doing the, the slight radius so you can actually make the turning movement. And then there is the, uh, fence and, uh, security gates, uh, just there by the, uh, the guardhouse that are being added.
So if I said back to you what I think I heard, is if I'm looking at the proposed building, which is basically at the center of the page, maybe a little bit plant east, there was a sidewalk that connected from just plant south of that building that ran out to Monticello, which is on the far plant east? I didn't realize we were looking at the proposed new site plan, that's why I couldn't figure out where the old sidewalk.
Yeah, where was, where was the existing sidewalk?
The existing sidewalk was on, um, I don't see in north there. Yeah, I guess it'd be, if you.
So I'm using plan?
Yeah, plant, if you call plan south, yes, the sidewalk, uh, was on plan south, south of the boulevard that, uh, continued straight back a curb, more or less, following the boulevard.
I'm, I'm falling out. That's why I couldn't figure it out because it wasn't on there.
And I believe the planning commission, the planning commission motion did not dictate exactly where that sidewalk should be. It could have been on the plan north, plan south. It could have continued that sidewalk that's in front of the business school farther out. It could have been curvy. It, it, it was really up to the applicant to, to pick the location.
But the philosophy was you'd be able to connect in the CIU from Monticello Road on a sidewalk?
Correct. So if you were arriving, um, or leaving by bike or pedestrian, um, or in a wheelchair or any other mode other than car, you had that ability to safely, um, get through that particular.
And why was it pulled out? What was the reasoning behind?
Um, you can ask the applicant, there was a summary, um, of their request. That was in the, uh, the agenda item.
See applicant here?
They are.
Okay. The applicant would come forward.
Good evening. I'm Dan Creed with Heritage Engineering. Keith Marion with CIU is here as well and will speak. When this case came before the planning commission for site plan review, the commission placed two conditions on it. One, both related to connectivity. One is for, uh, internal connectivity to the parking lots in the center of campus. And actually, those are, are, have been constructed. The second part is connectivity to Monticello Road. The, uh, the plan, in response to that, we created a, and submitted a plan which is in the, uh, which is in the package, it's the one that's shown as previously approved. Sidewalk plan provided for permit is, is how it's labeled and it showed all the parking, all the sidewalks and it showed the, the sidewalk going from essentially where it is now, near the left turn lane, out to Monticello Road. When we made this, this plan change, we didn't understand the ramifications from the university's perspective as to from a, a security standpoint, what this did to them. Um, and, and, which is why we're back before you now. In your package, you have support and you have documents from CIU, uh, addressing that and, and Mr. Marion will address that, uh, here, here shortly. I do want to point out that this is, we're not requesting a variance from, from an ordinance, this is a, uh, requesting another lookout of conditioned place by the commission. Um, I, I want to point out also that, that this is not an urban setting. This is, this, the campus is connected to the city by the Broad River, not Monticello Road. Um, and so this is, um, again, not a typical city center urban, um, setting. Um, and, and then the other point, as Mr. Fellows puts in his, in his staff report, you're right, we're a couple hundred feet away from Monticello Road with a sidewalk. This is not about trying to save money by not building a sidewalk. Clearly, this is important to, to the university, for them to maintain security in a manner that, that serves their students, um, and, and protects their students. And with, with that, I'll ask, uh, Keith Marion to come and, and, and speak more directly about those concerns.
Thank you. So this is more of a safety issue then?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Keith Marion with Columbia International University and, uh, as Dan has said, when we look back at this, uh, we have a safety and a security concern. Uh, as you notice from the plan, we're adding security to our entrance. Uh, we are a campus that lives within the campus. Uh, our students come by vehicular traffic. Uh, while there is a bus stop and access from Monticello Road, that is not the community that comes to us. So we, we provide parking for them internal on campus and are trying to improve a safe en, environment. So we have really no reason to connect to Monticello Road for pedestrians that do not come to our campus. Uh, so for safe, it, it is a safety issue and a security issue for us.
So you have no one on your campus that rides the bus? That rides the city bus that has to get to your campus from the city bus?
No, ma'am.
Is there access to your campus now from Monticello Road? I mean.
There's not a connecting sidewalk. There's a sidewalk that is on Monticello Road and it ends at our entrance. And, but then we do not connect to that sidewalk with our internal sidewalk.
So that's where the proposed guardhouse, it ends there?
It ends there. Again, which is a security step for us.
I'm just going to ask a practical question. Whether there's a sidewalk or not, how is that a safety thing? I mean, could somebody not just come through the lawn to get to you now? I mean, don't have to physically be on a concrete sidewalk.
Well, part of what we're doing with the gatehouse, if you look at the plan, is putting up a security fence. So we, we are, no longer will it be possible for you to just walk onto our campus without going through a security gate because fencing will have shut that off. Currently, you can.
Okay.
Come by the water tower.
So should a sidewalk remain, say that this was to be denied, just hypothetically, could you not put some type of security gate on the sidewalk if that was really the issue?
Uh, yes, we, we could. It would be an extra burden to us because it does not go through our security gatehouse. So, but yes.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
From a practical perspective.
Yeah. Uh, but again, we feel like that would be creating something that's not serving our community.
Okay.
Do y'all have security problems now? I mean, is that, is this something that y'all are?
Yes, ma'am. Unfortunately.
What kinds of issues do y'all currently have?
Um, one, we have, as an educational institution, we have to come aware of what's going on on, on all of our, in all of our country, uh, of safety issues, uh, on, on campus. Uh, we have been an open campus, uh, no name tags, et cetera. We're a small campus. We no longer can operate that way with, with what conditions of our country at this time. So it is an issue of stepping up and improving our security. But daily, uh, we have unidentified guests on our campus that our security officers ha, have to deal with.
I guess I just go back to the idea of, you know, if you could incorporate a sidewalk into the current security system, I, I guess I'm not clear as to, um, you know, and I don't know that you would never have a student who rode the bus or never have a student who, you know, rode a bike or needed accessibility. I just, um, there's, I, I guess I'm just.
Yeah.
I'm Chuck Roden. I'm the Honors Representative for, uh, CIU. I'd like to make a, a point. While CIU does, i- is in the jurisdictional limits of the city, it is not a typical urban campus that you would expect to see within the city limits. The removal of this connectivity, uh, has been given a lot of thought, um, for the security and the safety of staff, um, and students. It, it really comes down to what, uh, Keith was saying earlier about what's going on in our nation today. And as we all know, there's probably been no fewer than 16 mass shootings, many of them on educational campuses. So this is a measure that CIU is trying to take to remove that connectivity and, and improve the safety and security of their campus. So just wanted to point out, this is not your typical urban setting, while it is in the jurisdictional limits.
I guess I remain confused about, and, and again, that, maybe that's my confusion about the site plan, but that there couldn't be a sidewalk that was within the oversight of the, of the.
Security gate.
Security gates.
CIU just doesn't want to encourage connectivity. I, I hear what you're saying, yes, there could be a gate that would be put at the gatehouse and so forth. But, uh, CIU prefers not to invite that connectivity from Monticello Road into the camp, that type of connectivity, being pedestrian. It's okay with vehicles and other type, uh, accesses to the, to the campus, but the pedestrian is, is an ongoing problem.
Forgive me for not understanding your student population all that well. Is it primarily folks that are living on campus or are there folks that are commuting on a day-to-day basis in and out of campus?
Uh, the maj, about two-thirds of our students that are in regular courses are, live on our campus. We have both single housing and married family housing on campus. The other third do commute, uh, vehikally and that's why we have as much parking as we have on campus.
The question I was, that comes to mind is currently, I can understand, maybe folks in that neighborhood aren't walking onto your campus and I, and I understand where you're going with that, but would folks not bike to campus? It seems to me like a reasonable thing that folks would find that a road of less travel to take a bike on. That seems like a natural place, but maybe I'm confused by that. Maybe there's nobody riding bikes there.
Well, practically speaking, again, you, you have to understand where we are. We're three miles off the interstate. We're away from everything else and so it's, it's just not, it's not where you bike. Uh, and, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing else between us and the interstate and coming downtown. So, uh, no, our, our students that commute do not bike.
I guess philosophically, I, I, I feel like you, you're saying that you in some ways are removed from the city and you are stating that you would like to remove yourselves more by putting in a fence and those kinds of things. But, uh, not even connecting with a sidewalk and, and even with the sense that you could potentially have that be under the auspices of what would provide safety if, if the reasoning is, you know, preventing a mass shooting or something like that. I don't, um, understand if there is security oversight from one entrance with a gate that there, that you, that there wouldn't be a sidewalk because there's some level of connectivity to the city that's implied with that. And I, I guess that's, that's what I'm struggling with a little bit. And it sounds like you're saying you don't want that, but I also feel like you are within the city boundaries and so that connectivity is on some level important, particularly if you can still oversee the security aspect of it, so.
Well, I have to, I have to say again, our connection to the city is the Broad River. It is not Monticello Road. Uh, there's nothing but county between us and the city on Monticello Road. And, and please do not misunderstand us, we're not trying to remove ourselves from the city or anything. Uh, we're trying to secure ourselves against what's hap, what's happening and we feel, you know, we, we would rather not be dealing with this, you know, which I'm sure all of us would rather not be dealing with security issues. But it is where we are in life today.
I guess I just hear you, it, it sounds like part of your argument is related to mass shootings and that's what the concern is. And I'm, I'm not convinced that, um, you know, the prior site plan had a sidewalk and that that was part of what was approved and that taking away this sidewalk is going to, um, fundamentally change that, but I.
Do you, do you have a fence up on that area?
Uh, no, that is part of what, what we are developing now, is the guardhouse and a security fence.
But on the side of Monticello Road is there a fence?
Not currently.
Anybody could walk in off Monticello Road today?
Uh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that's what we're try, that's what we're working to, to change.
What I'm, what I'm trying to find out is what difference would a sidewalk make compared to what, if you have no fence or no barrier now?
We will have a fence.
Oh, you're going to put a fence up?
Yes.
That's phase two of the boulevard.
My understanding is you want a fence around the perimeter all the way, correct? Or, no, just on Monticello?
It'll just be across Monticello. Yeah, that's, yeah, we have 436 acres from Monticello Road to the Broad River, so it's a little difficult to fence the whole property. So we will only be fencing access areas like, which is primarily Monticello Road.
What was staff's recommendation for this? What was staff's recommendation for this?
Um, I guess our recommendation was with the addition of the guardhouse, the turnaround, the security gates and the fence, that anyone arriving onto the campus in any mode, whether it's truck, car, pedestrian, wheelchair, bicycle, they can all check into the guardhouse and they can all be either told they have access, they're, they're a visitor and they're expected, or they don't have an appointment and they have, and be turned around and sent back off of, back onto Monticello Road. So that guardhouse and the security measures there seem to be able to address any mode of transportation. It's just being able to make that connection.
So somebody were coming down Monticello Road or walking down Monticello Road, they would just have to enter and get, go through the guardhouse if they want?
Right. And that guardhouse, it has a very large gate. Uh, you know, you could easily, I think, make that gate so you can have a five-foot gap at the back of curb. And when the gate opens, it could allow for that pedestrian to get through if they're allowed to. And I guess it's really sort of an, an access equity type thing. If someone arrives, has an appointment at CIU and they choose to take the Comet and they get off at the bus stop and they're going to walk, they're going to have to either walk in the lawn or walk in the, the driving lane of the vehicles. And if they're in a wheelchair, then they're going to probably be in the driving lane from that perspective. And it could be, maybe not now, but it might be in the future. They hire an employee who chooses to take the bus and, you know, maybe they're working in the cafeteria or doing some other kinds of things. So it's really, we're just looking at it from now that the campus has actually moved towards Monticello with the business school. We're just looking, essentially was looking at it from an equity access so that everybody had whatever your mode was. And I think with the security, you know, the guard, the guardhouse is there. Whether you're coming in any kind of vehicle or other mode, guards should be able to deny access or accept access. And I would assume it's a 24-hour gate because there's classes at different times. So I would assume it's.
I have a follow-up question for the applicant. I happen to spend a lot of time on Monticello Road, so I know this building has a very attractive building that y'all are doing. The folks that are coming to the business school, do you anticipate them coming off Broad River or do you anticipate them coming off Monticello?
Monticello.
See, that would be intuitive to me because it's right there on the street. So I guess that furthers the question then. If your patrons and your guests of the business school are going to be coming to your campus from Monticello, it would seem natural to me that somebody either on a bicycle or on a wheelchair would take a, get out of the road and get on a sidewalk through a secured entrance. I don't know. I may be overthinking it, but that just seems logical to me because it's a very attractive building. I suspect you're going to have a lot of guests.
That would be true in a typical urban setting.
Have you had a lot of crime? Have you had a lot of crime?
The last time you've been on Monticello. You see, IU has taken some great measures and spent a lot of dollars trying to clean up portions of Monticello, starting at the interstate. And if you've been out there lately, you've seen where there were these derelict buildings and places of business that if you were taking your son or daughter to this university, you would maybe give second thought about what CIU has expended an effort and dollars in their effort, starting at I-20, which is the connectivity to the city, picking up the county, trying to work as a, as a good community institution that says, we want to clean up this area. But it's just not right now we want to make that connectivity from Monticello to the campus for cause of the reasons you said. And it, no way does the, does CIU want to, to turn themselves away from this area. That's, that's the last thing.
Any more questions for the applicants? Or for staff? Thank you.
I'm sorry. Just to clarify, Mr. Fellows, do, so does staff recommend this change? I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
We're actually recommending denial. But if you wanted to, you know, approve it with that, the guardhouse and the, the gate and a sidewalk and defer the details to be worked out with the applicant and staff, we would be able to do that, so.
So.
Their, their request is to not construct the sidewalk and we are recommending.
Denial.
Denial.
Okay, just, just clarifying. I'm sorry, I don't have it in.
Wait, you're recommending denial of the sidewalk?
No, denial of their request to change. They want to change.
Correct.
They had a sidewalk in their prior plan and they're asking for no sidewalk. And staff is saying, we, we want a sidewalk.
And just to clarify, it's not that we want the sidewalk. We think that the sidewalk is equitable for all people that would be accessing the property.
That.
Okay. Does everybody understand?
So can we ask the applicant, are they willing to do that? The sidewalk, the, the guardhouse? Are they willing to do the sidewalk?
Well, right now, they have to do it. I mean, if, I mean, as, under the current status, if we all left right now, they are required to do a sidewalk. So are you asking if they want to do all the new stuff and a sidewalk, if they're willing to do that or?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking if they're, because he said we could approve it if they were willing to do guardhouse, this, the third.
And the sidewalk.
And sidewalk.
I think what Mr. Fellows was saying was that if you deny the request or if you want to make, if your request is for them to install the sidewalk, that it would be incorp, that the, the design would be incorporated into the guard shack as they are proposing and that the details of that plan would be deferred to staff to kind of work through how they get it through the guard.
So we could, we could basically deny their request and then kick it back to y'all to figure out the best way for them to put the sidewalk in and get these other additional security improvements that they're asking for.
Correct. Yes. Thank you for clarifying.
But I do have a question though, to that point, now that we kind of understand all those circumstances. The original plan was to put two sidewalks to get to Monticello. Could there be a scenario where it's a singular sidewalk or something of that nature?
No, it was just one sidewalk. And it was, it was the motion, uh, the condition was a sidewalk. It didn't matter if it was on the plan south, plan north. It was just a sidewalk. When they submitted their construction drawings, they chose plan south as their option. They could certainly do plan north, which would be on the side where vehicular traffic is coming in and so therefore all traffic, whether you're pedestrians or whatever, they'd all be coming in at the same point. So the guard would, you know, be checking people in all on the same side. They wouldn't, you wouldn't have to be on plan south to have confusion of the guard having to pay attention to both sides.
The details are incorrect. The details say that there's one sidewalk going to main campus and two sidewalks shall be divided to Monticello to connect to the existing sidewalk. That was what threw me for a loop. Now that we understood the details after you guys went through the.
Sorry about that.
Summary.
So let me make sure I understand this. I'm still, because I'm looking at a plan without a sidewalk right now.
Yes, you are.
Has staff approved this plan?
Uh, no. The plan that was approved, which was in your packet, but that we don't have for you to put on the screen.
I've got it.
Shows a sidewalk on plan south. And I apologize if you don't have the.
It's the one that has the stamp on it for permit.
So again, we could, we could deny this request to take the sidewalk away and then leave it to y'all to figure out kind of the details of where things might shift that's best for them to ensure that they have their security.
Correct. That would be the, that would be the, the next step in that instance.
Okay. Once they figure this out.
But there's no guardhouse there either on this original plan.
Can I ask the applicant to come back up again?
Certainly can if you'd like.
Okay. Yeah, I have a. At first, I thought there was an issue with the sidewalk on this plan as I see it, going to Monticello Road directly that way. But actually, the sidewalk is on the boulevard. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
It ties into Monticello Road.
Yes.
So I'm trying to figure out what difference would that make if cars are coming in that way or somebody comes in that way, they still can't get into the building without going through the guardhouse, right? They still can't get into that portion of the campus.
That's the intent of the security, yes.
But is there a gate where the driveway will be that lets people in and out?
In the revised plan.
In the revised plan.
That's the revised plan?
Yeah.
This was the plan that got approved at commission last time. So the, the guardhouse didn't exist. So what you're looking at is something that has not been in front of commission until today.
Okay. That's what's going through on the.
Yep.
So again, we were talking about this while y'all were chatting, but we can deny the request for no sidewalk and then leave it to them to figure out how they can incorporate a sidewalk in a way that will provide them with the security that they're asking, although.
With staff.
With staff approval.
Thank you. I just wanted to get clarified. Okay. I guess if there are no further questions for staff or the applicant, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
I move that we deny this request for a change from the prior site plan review and that we ask staff to work with the applicant to move the sidewalk where is going to be best for the university, but that there is a sidewalk there.
We have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion's denied.
Other business in your packet is the adoption of some revised planning commission rules and procedures. And what I'd like you to do is to take those home, read them over the next month, and then we can discuss at the October meeting. We have some very old bylaws. So those are bylaws that address new city council standards, as well as we actually looked at the bylaws of other South Carolina planning commissions and tried to make sure that, A, they conformed with state statutes and that they had the best practices for the planning commission. So we'd just like you to find 10 minutes to review them in the next month. And then at the next meeting, we can discuss any issues or concerns you have or questions, and then hopefully we'll approve those, and then those will get passed along through that approval process. We'd look for a motion. And if you have questions in the meantime, in the next 30 days, feel free to give me a call and we can chat about it or send me an email or something.
Can I just ask a request? Article three, section four references the most recent city of Columbia Boards and Commissions Handbook. Can you circulate that? I don't know that I've seen one in recent time.
You should have all gotten it in your binder when you came on the board.
In recent time.
But I will recirculate it as a PDF just in case some of you have been on for a while. Maybe you actually have the version before that or something.
I don't know if it's been updated or anything.
We will do that, yes.
Perfect.
We'll send that out tomorrow.
If there's no other business, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. We're off the camera now, right? No?
No.
All right.